Yes, yes.
Good evening. I would like to call the City of Brookhaven Planning Commission's Special Call Meeting to Order, Public Hearing to Order. The time now is 7:00 PM. It's July 18th, 2013. I will do a roll call on the members here to answer present or not. Stan Siegel, our chairman, is absent. John Funny, vice chair, present. Shannon Cameron.
Present.
Jack Hunter.
Present.
Adrian Smith.
Present.
Rob Francore.
Present.
And John Hess. Absent. We expect John to be arriving. The next item I would like to do, I would like to read the Planning Commission preamble. The Planning Commission is a group of Brookhaven citizens appointed by the mayor and city councilor. The Planning Commission hearing is the venue for public hearings requiring for the consideration of land use matters. Public hearings will be conducted in accordance with the adopted rules and procedures, including time limits. The Planning Commission is a recommending body. The commission does not rezonate property, but does provide recommendations for consideration by the mayor and council. Final decision regarding land use matters are made by the mayor and city council. The order for each case will be, I will identify the specific case, subject case. Staff will provide recommendations. The applicant will present the case. The proponent and opponents are allowed to make public comments. Ten minutes total each side. Applicant provides rebuttal if necessary. The public hearing is then closed, and the Planning Commission provides a recommendation. I would like to remind each of you that here, if you would complete a public comment card, if you're planning on speaking, please complete a public comment card. At this time, I would like to call Susan Cannon, Cannon, excuse me, Susan, to give us some organizational and procedural items. Ms. Cannon?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, in that regard, I believe what you may be referring to are a couple of housekeeping matters relative to work sessions. Recently, the Planning Commission asked that you have work sessions separate and apart from public hearings. So we did provide a schedule for that and held the first work session from 11:30 to 1:30 Monday. We have provided a schedule to the commission. We will make it part of the record for the minutes, and we will continue to advertise those work sessions so that the public is aware that you are having work sessions. I believe the second item, Mr. Chairman, that I believe you were referring to is that the commission wanted to be aware of when your term limits were. We did provide that information to you in your work session, and we will include that term limit record in the minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Cannon, and that will be included so that the public can see when we're meeting and discussing matters in the work session as well as alternative.
Yes.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. We don't have any old business or finished business, so we do have new business on the agenda. This is a rezoning ordinance ID number 1113, RZ 13-05. Consideration of rezoning of Central Center, Altus Park. The current zoning is office institution and office distribution. We do have a file from the county that lays out the different OI and OD distributions, so we do have that. I don't have that here with me, but we do know that, and we do have it.
So it's not a simple pattern to say this half is OI and this half is OD?
Honestly, I, no, it's not, I don't, I don't remember. Sorry.
And I want to follow up with that question. So the current zoning, as we have accepted that from DeKalb County, is office industrial or office distribution, is that correct?
It's office institution and office distribution.
Okay. Which, if, okay, the office distribution portion, that would, this for clarification also for public awareness, that can be a trucking company that wants to set up a distribution warehouse. They can go ahead and do that because it's already zoned as office distribution, is that correct?
On its face, office distribution would allow that. When this was zoned by the county, there's office institution and office distribution zoning, and potential slups, special land use permits that were applied to the county. So there, there are quite a few uses that are allowed, and as I indicated, we have many, many files, many, many boxes that we've been going through. There are points in time, however, when conditions are placed on property to exclude certain uses. That is not one in which we know whether that is excluded or not.
Okay. So I think for the knowledge of the commission, we're looking at what's there now and what we would be recommending as a future zoning if this becomes annexed.
Correct.
Sure. Ms. Cannon, just referring back to the topic we talked about in our...
...department which will launch soon has indicated that an additional four members to the police department will be needed to provide service to the area. The DeKalb County Fire Marshal has not provided comments at this time, nor has the Board of The DeKalb County Office of Watershed Management has not provided comments at this time. It should be noted that the City of Brookhaven recently approved a resolution providing for the establishment of stormwater service fee rates and credits to the stormwater service fee. Such fees will generate revenue for the stormwater utility enterprise for stormwater management purposes, which we will be taking over. The staff has recommended approval of this rezoning to PC three, which has been initiated by the City Council, Mayor and Council of Brookhaven, and we recommend approval with four conditions, and those are that, number one, the subject property be developed in substantial accordance with the Century Central Office Port Master Plan and POD description included within the staff recommendation. Number two, the pedestrian community district development aspects pertaining to ownership, phasing, transportation, and stormwater management practices shall be executed by the developer in conjunction with the Community Development Director. Number three, any previous development standards or permits approved or issued by DeKalb County at the time of annexation shall be accepted by the City of Brookhaven. And number four, any previous conditions of zoning, special land use permits, variances, or other special permits imposed by DeKalb County shall be in effect and shall be implemented in conjunction with the master plan. Any such DeKalb County terms and imposed conditions by the City of Brookhaven shall be interpreted and implemented by the Community Development Director. And John, if you could turn to the slide that identifies the area removed. On your staff report, and as I indicated earlier, the initial report indicated that the acreage contained 100, that overall acreage was 100.229 acres. That acreage has been adjusted to 100.051. In discovery, we determined that the area on the visual, there's a circle around a small flag area to the northwest of the site that goes to Claremont Road that has been removed. That is no longer part of this rezoning application, nor is it part of the annexation application or petition that the City Council will consider next week. That completes the staff report, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Any question for Mrs. Cannon? And I'd like to acknowledge John Gess, John Gess, thank you, John. John, do you have a question?
I have a question for the chairman. I'm trying to visualize, I understand, I'm familiar with the property. I'm trying to visualize how contiguous this area is with the rest of the City of Brookhaven. Is there anything that we have that...
Excuse me, I would ask that there be no outbursts as we are discussing this matter. I really would appreciate everyone's patience with us as we are discussing this matter, and no now outbursts, please. Thank you for your cooperation. Was that question directed to me, John?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The way the City of Brookhaven is laid out, the actual property abuts the section to the west of what they requested, and that would be, if you wrote a name here...
Claremont.
Claremont, thank you, Claremont Road.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon.
We're not taking questions from the floor. I do, I do recognize this is your hand. There will be an opportunity for the public to have an opportunity to speak through the public hearing, so I'm not ignoring you, ma'am. I just would like to follow our procedures. I would like to also go back, and this is for the public. I understand that there are several initiatives happening, but I would like to make certain that the public is aware of our role as it relates to this matter. And I'm going to repeat paragraph one and two, Mrs. Cannon, of what you read for the clarity of the public so that they will understand the planning commission position with this, with this matter. On July 1, 2013, the property ordinance of the area in question filed an application for annexation into the City of Brookhaven. On the same day, pursuant to OCGA 36-36-6, by authority vested in the mayor and the council, the City Council of Brookhaven, I'm sorry, the City of Brookhaven served DeKalb County with a statutory notice of intent to annex the subject property. Pursuant to OCGA 36-66-4, the City of Brookhaven is mandated to complete all of the zoning procedures with respect to a piece of property to be annexed, except for the final vote on the zoning prior to adoption of the annexation ordinance. So I'm repeating that simply to state that we are not discussing the annexation. This planning body, this commission, is only responsible for aligning and recommending to the City Council of what the land use and zoning should be if the annexation passes. We have no authority to vote on annexation within this body. We're only looking at the land use and zoning with regards to this piece of property if it passes. So I just want to make sure that that's clear, as we have been presented this case by the city. Any other questions for Mrs. Cannon?
Yes. Ms. Cannon, is the planning staff aware of all of the outstanding developer permits for the site? Any slups? Have we done our due diligence and know what would happen if we recommend the PC three zoning change that we're going to carry over from DeKalb County?
The PC three zoning change and the forced-out conditions would include all of those items that would come over from DeKalb County. We have hundreds of boxes from DeKalb County, and we, as we vet our map, we're finding all of the different aspects that apply to all the properties in the, in the City of Brookhaven that we're receiving from DeKalb County. This particular action will include recognizing anything that came over from DeKalb County in the application of the conditions that, if the council does them, and this is why the application of the new conditions that would apply to the property.
Okay. Any other question for Mrs. Cannon? Mrs. Cannon, is there any other parties that will be speaking on behalf of this?
I believe the property owner representative and perhaps the attorney for the property owners are present tonight, so if you'd like to call them to speak.
Sure. They're welcome to, I'm sorry. Yes, Ms. Dondren has a question.
Do we know what the current zoning of the property is? Is it multiple zonings? Do you know how that breaks down and all?
The current zoning is office institution and office distribution. We do have a file from the county that lays out the different OI and OD distributions, so we do have that. I don't have that here with me, but we do know that, and we do have it.
So it's not a simple pattern to say this half is OI and this half is OD?
Honestly, I, no, it's not, I don't, I don't remember. Sorry.
And I want to follow up with that question. So the current zoning, as we have accepted that from DeKalb County, is office industrial or office distribution, is that correct?
It's office institution and office distribution.
Okay.
The zoning.
Which, if, okay, the office distribution portion, that would, this for clarification, also for public awareness, that can be a trucking company that wants to set up a distribution warehouse, they can go ahead and do that because it's already zoned as office distribution, is that correct?
On its face, office distribution would allow that. When this was zoned by the county, there's office institution and office distribution zoning, and, and potential slups, special land use permits that were applied to the county. So there, there are quite a few uses that are allowed, and as I indicated, we have many, many files, many, many boxes that we've been going through. There are points in time, however, when conditions are placed on property to exclude certain uses. That is not one in which we know whether that is excluded or not.
Okay. So I think for the knowledge of the commission, we're looking at what's there now and what we would be recommending as a future zoning if this becomes annexed.
Correct.
Sure.
Ms. Cannon, just referring back to the topic we talked about in our previous work session on Monday. The streets of this project are currently all private?
They are private, yes, sir.
Okay, so privately, that, what does that mean in layman's terms? It's paving?
If the responsibility of the property owner, not, not the city.
Okay. So does that imply that there's a standard of upkeep that, that the private owner is held to, or, or what level of oversight, if any, does the municipal or county jurisdiction have over those roads if they deteriorate?
We don't have any monetary requirement or maintenance requirement, it's the requirement of the property owner.
Okay. From a code enforcement or safety, life safety perspective, any oversight as to the quality of those roads, or?
Not as to the quality of the roads, no, sir.
Just a follow-up question to that, Mr. Chairman. For also, for Ms. Cannon, the, the branch of the creek is spanned between pods one and two in the graphic. We'll back up to that graphic of the master plan for a moment. See there between pods one and two and pod five to the southwest there? There's a, it's a four-lane divided by a median private road that spans that part of the creek. Under private ownership, what is, if any, interaction would the private owner have with the appropriate jurisdiction governing that body of water? State EPD, et cetera?
If you have a stream, no matter whether it's a private driveway or a public road, in the instance of a private driveway, you are allowed to have a stream crossing. So under the EPD regulations, that would be something that would be allowed, it is not prohibited.
Any other questions before we invite the property owner and the attorney?
Thank you.
Sure. If your other parties would like to present, they can, if they state their name and they would like to present. The name and the property they own are represented.
Okay. Well, I'm Jim Bicata, Vice President of Highwoods Properties, and I don't really have any, you know, prepared remarks, but first let me answer one question I did hear. And I guess the question was, are there any slups that are in place right now in the park? There is one, and it's a pod at the top, I can't quite make it out, but I think it's the upper right pod.
Pod right?
Yeah. We do have, with DeKalb County, we do have approval to build about a 160,000-square-foot building there, and we are currently pursuing the tenant, and we're in competition, it's actually a government tenant, so we're in competition with other developers trying to win that deal. We, we aren't necessarily, you know, there are five developers in pursuit of that opportunity, we're just one of five, but we do have approval through DeKalb County. We have a slump, special land use permit in place right now, just wanted to answer that quick question. But that's the only one I'm aware of, I mean, that's the only, that's the only thing that's active. So what we are seeking here is zoning that we feel is appropriate for this location, for the eight points of ingress and egress that this location has, that the park has. If you, if you go around Atlanta, there, there is not another park of this size with the density that we're seeking that has virtually eight points of ingress and egress and that is up against the interstate. So we're, we're asking for what we think is reasonable densities, we're asking for a mixed-use variety of components. The park already has, is really essentially mixed-use, it's just very low density. Five of the buildings in the park are single-story, and, and that's, you know, the center of the park, pod one, where we anticipate a very vibrant mixed-use component with residential, office, service, retail. And, and we really, you know, Highwoods Properties, just to back up, Highwoods Properties is a 35-year-old company, a public-owned company based in Raleigh, North Carolina. We are in 11 cities in the southeast, we're in fact the largest office owner in the southeast. Company's public, traded on the New York Stock Exchange. The, we're a long-term investor. We've owned the buildings in Century Center, and we're, we have the ground lease on some of the buildings, we own the land under other buildings, but we've been the owner, the manager, for about 16 years. And whatever we do, we do with an eye towards quality, long-term hold. We don't build buildings flip. So everything we do is, is responsible, and we're good stewards of the community. We build for quality, we bring, our, our buildings bring good jobs to the, to the area, and, you know, we pay our taxes. And we, we view this as a terrific, long-term investment with great potential for future development. The market's not ready for these components just yet. The Atlanta office market is in recovery. It will be, you know, several years before, before we develop any of these components, it's just, just not ready yet. But with an eye towards the future and for quality and bringing value to the community, this is, this is what we seek. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bicata. Thank you for your speaking to this matter. I do have, and also thank you for sharing with us the vision of what Highwood Properties bring. I do have a couple of questions, and I would ask that legal, track my question, because I'm going to ask legal for interpretation also. Realizing that there is a potential annexation on the table, and your referencing DeKalb County has previously approved a SLUP.
A SLUP.
If this annexation happens, and if this body approves this special, this land use and zoning use, then my question would be to our legal, this property is now in the City of Brookhaven and no longer, well, it's in DeKalb County, but not in undercoordinated DeKalb County, it's in Brookhaven. How are we to interpret that from the perspective of we would like for him to follow PC three versus a previously approved SLUP from DeKalb County?
Well, legally, slups run with the lands, it doesn't matter what we rezone, the overall overwhelming zoning of the property is, the slump stays, we're the slump, I'm not speaking for the whole zoning procedure.
I'm sorry, could I ask you just to speak up a little bit closer to the line?
Sorry, I didn't sound that way. Slups, just like zonings, run with the land, it doesn't matter what we would change the underlying zoning to, the special land use permit remains, so whatever it allows remains in PC three zoning, just as it has in OI or OD. So they would have that permission to continue to build whatever it is that they're allowed to or have the use that they're allowed to under SOUP. We've also, as part of this rezoning, have recommended as one of the conditions that every single slump and other conditions that DeKalb County has placed on the property that are currently valid on the property would carry through and remain on the property. So we're not changing anything that DeKalb has allowed the property to be currently, except what the underlying zoning would then be going forward to future development.
Okay. But the SLUP actually follows the property.
The slump legally follows the land.
Mr. Chairman, just to follow up to that, also for legal, the slump runs with the land, staff recommended condition number four, page eight of the packet, last sentence of the paragraph number four, any such DeKalb terms and imposed conditions by, any such DeKalb County terms and imposed conditions by the City of Brookhaven shall be interpreted and implemented by the Community Development Director. So the, just so that I understand, the slump and the terms and conditions that come with the special land use permit are then interpreted by staff moving forward under the City of Brookhaven jurisdiction?
An SOUP, just like the zoning ordinance itself, is part of the zoning ordinance for that particular property, just like any part of the zoning ordinance, it is in, in certain ways subject to the interpretation of the Community Development Director where interpretation is necessary. Just like it is currently for the DeKalb County Planning Director.
All right, so if our, if the staff have opportunity to talk to that.
All right. So along with that, I think this, well, I, I would say from my perspective, I started to say this body, but I'm speaking for myself as Vice Chair and Acting Minister tonight. I think then if anything deviates from the PC three as listed in the DeKalb County adopted, uh, the City of Brookhaven, excuse me, the City of Brookhaven adopted zoning ordinance, then I would expect that that would be something that's brought back before this body and the public so that they can be aware of the deviations that may not fall within the guidelines of the ordinance that the City of Brookhaven had in place.
Well, it's a little complicated, it's a fact-based situation as to whatever they're trying to do. If, if, for example, they want to build something that would otherwise not necessarily be allowed in PC three, but is allowed under the current SOUP they have, the SOUP would control, and they would still be allowed to build that even though it would be inconsistent with the underlying PC three. And I like to say because it runs with the land, it doesn't matter the underlying zoning. But if they're so, trying to build something that doesn't necessarily go along with the SOUP, then they need to marry it to the PC three zoning that is underlying. Now there's, you know, once again, you can interpret further and say there's conditions beyond the SOUP that are on the property currently, and those, and, and those conditions are also being enforced in conjunction with PC three. But it, it's hard for me to speak any more specifically than that, because when this comes about, this really gets determined on a case-by-case basis as to what is requested and against what exists on the property in terms of zoning, slups, conditions, and otherwise factual scenario on the property. So it, some things may come back to this body, but that, that's not necessarily all of the things, or even most of the things, will come back.
Okay. And because we do not have a specific site plan yet, that's the case-by-case?
Yes, I, I can't, I can't speak to you in a specific portion.
Mr. Chairman, just on this topic of the slump, tell me your name again, Mr.?
Jim Bicata.
Bicata. Mr. Bicata, you're Vice President of Highwoods, what role specifically?
Uh, the Atlanta Division.
Atlanta, so you're at Atlanta for Highwoods.
Correct.
With respect to the, the, the current slump, which on the entire site only affects pod three, or applies to pod three?
Um, the, maybe, maybe.
In other words, well, here's my question, let me have staff comment on it first, perhaps, excuse me. The, the, the contents of the slump are still consistent within the north planning area of DeKalb and the Comprehensive Plan 2005, 2025, is that staff's position?
Can you repeat that one more time?
In other words, we're talking about the, the special land use permit, and I thought, I heard Mr. Bicata say that, that that has to do with one building that's being proposed that DeKalb approved under the slump, which affects pod three, and that development plan is, while it might be under slump, whether or not it's consistent with PC three, it's still consistent with the north planning area and, and the DeKalb Comprehensive Plan, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the slump, at this, in, in this definition, complies with, or fits within the DeKalb Comprehensive Plan?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Does a mechanism exist in the PC three zoning that allows trading entitlements from one property type to another? Is it automatic, or does it require an application?
Are you talking about transfer developerized?
Or tran, no, between property types, there's, you know, so many square feet of office that's allowed. If they want to trade some office square footage for some multifamily square footage, for example, what, is, does a mechanism exist in the zoning today to allow that, or how would that be accomplished?
What I would say to you about that is that this particular plan has six pods identified. The condition that we have noted is that the subject property shall be developed in substantial accordance with the Century Century Office Port Master Plan and POD description. So it would come down to a case-by-case interpretive issue with, for example, if, if they had in pod two that they were proposing a, an eight-story building with 80,000 square feet, and they said, I'm just giving an example, we would prefer to have a six-story building here, or a seven-story building here, can we move some of that square footage into pod one? Then we would have to look at whether or not that's a substantial change or not. So there is an avenue to look at some shifting, but you have to be careful that you're not allowing for the site to be overbuilt to the max, and you just have to be careful with how you view those, those requests. So that's the reason for substantial accordance language and condition number one.
Sir, you said the square footage was 160 square feet, 160,000?
Of the, of that particular building in pod three.
So according to what the zoning we have in front of us, it says square foot up to 300,000, so your building would be smaller?
Smaller than...
Than what is being put here. So am I missing something?
No, that's a fact.
So it's, it complies with this anyway?
So, so you're just acknowledging that it's within the up to?
It's, it's within what we're proposing here, so there's a special thing with DeKalb that's called then.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. One additional question for Mr. Bicata. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Yes, you are.
From the, the owner's perspective of this project, are you authorized to describe from a strategic point of view, would you consider this a core asset for the portfolio that your company manages?
It is exactly core. What we consider core in all our disclosures to the public and any, any discussions, if you went back and, and researched it, you would see that we, we do consider it core, which, which means that it, it's essential to our long-term strategy to own this property.
So it's a long-term vision and kind of stewardship of the land, so to speak?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Commissioner Dondren?
I'm looking at your pods descriptions and at the requirements of the PC district, and I'm just trying to put it all together here. The P, this PC district means pedestrian community district, is that correct? And in your application, it says, an application for PC district designation, there's a very detailed requirement for a plan application that shows building locations, footprints, interconnectivity, street grids, a multimodal plan for pedestrian connections, height setbacks, buildings and structures. So I guess my question would be, I'm looking if my math is correct, you're, you're, by, through your pods, you're anticipating adding about 2 million square feet of some sort of office space generally or business space, and 500-plus units of residential. In pod one, I understand that those buildings are primarily... In Pod one, I understand that those buildings are primarily terrais and that was going to be, would be the mixed-use center?
That's correct.
Why, and why does the application not contain a more detailed master plan showing those building footprints, heights, how the mixed-use center works, showing the proportion of residential and retail and so on as, as required by the application?
Well, we, we, this application is just for general, general totals of each of those components. A detailed master plan is just not something that we've, we've even started. We've had lots of discussions with consultants and architects, land planners, civic, civil engineers, but we haven't developed a detailed master plan yet simply because market, it's premature for us to make that kind of investment. It's a very, very detailed process and expensive process and one that evolves over time anyway. The, the reason for the concentration in the, in the Pod one is because it's in the center of the park and it's, you know, all those buildings are single-story and that's where the greatest density logically would be. But a detailed, a detailed master plan is, is, just has not been developed yet. It will, it will, inevitably, you know, the road will stay in place, the Four League Boulevard will remain in place and these components will be on either side of it, sidewalks will remain in place, but exactly where the residential component is placed, exactly where the retail components and the, and the office components are, is yet to be determined within that pod, but.
Well, the reason I ask the question, the reason I think it's important is because the PC district is site plan dependent and, and that means really that everything has to relate in specific ways. In other words, if we simply grant the densities based on these general areas that can be put on, and it really won't amount to what's contained in here in terms of a pedestrian-friendly core and so on. Right now, for example, I was out there today, there's no way you can, it's very pedestrian unfriendly, as bucolic as it is, you can't walk from one building, you can barely walk from parking lot to the building because there's no sidewalks. And, and let me be clear, I, I support this as a use, I think it's a wonderful aspiration, I think it's a wonderful long-term use for the property. I'm just stumbling over the idea that without a more defined site plan that's called for in this, we're giving you a very large entitlement without the limitations or the public interest of making sure it's a real community that Brookhaven would want to sanction.
Uh, can I add a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sure, go ahead.
On the heels of Mr. Hunter's observations, yeah, I'll put the question to you, Mr. Bicata, you do realize that irrespective of what the, assuming that the city council and mayor approve what you're asking for here based on this site plan, that you do understand, and I'm sure your organization does as well, I'll look to see a nod or a gesture of acknowledgement here when I finish this question, that you will be held to the standards of PC three and that's staff's requirements for all of the components on these, you know, three pages here within the code, the detail of the plan, the pedestrian interconnectivity, the proportional relationships and the human scale developments and the multimodal details as required in the PC three, you realize that you will be held to that, nothing's coming out of the ground?
Absolutely, correct.
Unless you comply with that.
Absolutely, I understand.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add to what Mr. Schmidt just said, that is the case, the staff will be charged with responsibility of reviewing all the land development permits, plans, hydrology, erosion, land development plans, building plans, and all of the components required to review before any permit can be issued. And just as a reminder, this is an overall master plan, an overall conceptual master plan, the development will be required to be in substantial accordance with this master plan and as they go through the development process and go through each phase, all of that will be vetted with the entire Brookhaven team and staff. And again, this was initiated by the city council.
Okay, so this, and I'm going to reference this as a bubble diagram, this is a high-level bubble diagram that basically sets the foot, the ground rules on what should come within this area, and this is mimicking what your comprehensive plan is doing for other areas in the city of Brookhaven, is that correct?
I would say that, that this is more detailed actually than the comprehensive plan in that the comprehensive plan does give character areas. This is a little more specific than that, it's a guiding, guiding master plan for the actual specific site plans that the staff will be vetting with the development as it moves forward, if, if it is zoned.
Okay, so this is more detailed?
Yes, yes.
Than what the comp plan have for other areas throughout the city of Brookhaven?
Yes, yes it is.
And as the city of Brookhaven move forward to update their comprehensive plan at the end of this year or sometime later this year, you will be doing the same type of characterization with other areas throughout the city of Brookhaven?
Yes, yes, sir. It will not be to this degree, it will be a larger, broader brush.
So you're going to scale back on that?
Just to help people to think that they're going to see buildings and things of that nature, so.
Okay, any other, yes, Commissioner Hunter?
Another question on a specific issue, the PC district is very clear that all streets must be public streets, no private streets allowed. Do you have any objection to the streets becoming public streets?
Not at all. I, I wanted to add just one comment, but I want to point out that there are several buildings that are ten or eleven stories and one building existing that's eighteen stories. We're, we're only asking for a maximum of twelve stories. That will be a very controlling limitation on, on what is developed there. The, so I think, you know, we're not asking for a king and queen at concourse, it's thirty-eight or forty stories tall, this is, this is twelve stories. And I think the, the character of what we're attempting to achieve in the long run in this park will be something that really everyone who lives proximate to the park will really appreciate. I realize, I realize there are a lot of folks that, that will disagree with me, but the amenities and the beauty and the quality and the enhancement of property values proximate to the, to this park will, I think, surprise folks.
Thank you, Mr. Bicata, for your comments. At this time, we will move on with our meeting, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I do apologize.
Can I address one issue that?
Can you identify yourself, please?
Woody Galloway with the Galloway Law Group, I'm here representing Highwoods as well. I just wanted to make sure that y'all are all aware this, the special land use permits deal with height, and that's all they deal with, is height. So there aren't any uses out there that, that you're unaware of. The only unexercised special land use permit is the one up there on Pod three that I'm aware of. And that is something we just went through the process to obtain in decaf county and receive that without any problem, we got that approved by the decaf county board commissioners and working with the neighborhoods around there, et cetera. So that is, if you're worried about some outlier that you aren't aware of that might come back to haunt you someday, that's, that's not the case. I've been working with Highwoods for a very long time and that's the only one that I'm aware of that isn't already constructed. You've got numerous buildings that are above the two-story height limitation, for example in OD. OD has a two-story height limitation, so every building above two stories had to get a special land use permit. But in the case of Pod three, that's one that has not been constructed. So I just wanted to make that.
Can you get your name again?
Woody Galloway with the Galloway Law Group.
So, the only one that you're familiar with in this level is the height restriction and since he said it's going to be a hundred and sixty thousand square foot, that's lesser than the three hundred thousand that's identified in here. So, okay.
So it's well within what we've identified within the pod. The idea was to provide the city council and you with an idea of what the vision is for the property so that you know what the expectations of the developer, the developer knows, what the expectations of the city is as it goes forward.
You mentioned also, and it was within your statement, that you worked with the community when you were going through this with the cab, I think that's, this body, when I speak of the body, I'm speaking of us, that's how they concern because we are serving our citizens and we're serving the citizens of Brookhaven. So that was one of my reasons for asking earlier, how does that translate from the cab to the city of Brookhaven because we're actually our own entity? But now that I've learned that you have clarified that it's, it deals with height and height is less intense than what is actually listed in here, so thank you for clarifying that.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead. Mr. Galloway, if you could help us better set the context of this, certainly for the benefit of the public that may not do this kind of thing or see this kind of thing on a day-to-day basis, as, from a third-party perspective, objective perspective, you see blue signs planted on the curb in connection with a application to reasonable piece property and you see fancy graphics like this and, and, you know, all sorts of cameras and, and members of the public and city staff. It almost looks like it's a big menacing situation. And it's understandable why the perception, I think oftentimes that's the case. But to, you know, reiterate what we do here, we make a, we provide an opinion to the legislative body that decides what to do with it. We don't approve rezonings here. We, we consider input from all parties, especially members of the public, and we want to make sure that we as commissioners ask the questions and examine applications, you know, from all sides, from the perspective of all constituents that may be affected by the project, whether they're adjacent to it or whether they're in approximate to a down street. So, from, in terms of helping us further set the context of this, if this gets rezoned, can, can you characterize what the process is like between getting a rezoning and coming out of the ground with the building? What do you have to do?
That's a very far-reaching question. What do you have to do specifically from an economic standpoint, you're going to have to find tenants, but from a, from a development standpoint, they will have to go through a, a master planning process. As we've indicated, Pod three is something that has been specifically designed on a micro basis, looked at, that was done specific to a GSA requirement, whether ultimately they won the bid or not, we don't, we're not sure, but that was done specific to a tenant. As you go to Pod one, they're going to have to go through a very lengthy planning process that will entail having a landscape architect, having planners, regular architects, et cetera, working with the city, incorporating the, the aspects of this zoning plan. We will have to do that and meet the requirements for connectivity, for pedestrian access, et cetera, we'll have to do that and that will be a lengthy process. And then we'll have to present those requests to the, to the city and perform a permit request and they will go through a vetting process and whether any of those need any public areas, we're not sure at this point, at this point. If there are substantial changes, as Susan indicated, we'll have to come back through the process, we'll come back before you, come back through the city council. But there is a, you know, from an environmental standpoint, you'll have to go through all the hydrology requirements, you'll have to meet all the civil engineering requirements for developing the streets or?
Presumably that could include traffic engineering studies and so on.
Absolutely, absolutely, and, you know, make sure of various other regional estate requirements, that we'll have to also go through those procedures. So, this will not, this is a bubble diagram of a plan for annexation, you have to bring a cloud, a property in and assign it a classification. This was really a mixed-use development that was developed in various pods, in OI and OD with the ultimate desire to have a better, more far-reaching development occur on the property, whether it's in decaf county or whether it's in the city of Brookhaven, but that will all occur over time. And as Jim indicated, Highwoods is a long-term owner, they're a very high-quality owner, they're somebody that'll be a good corporate citizen to, to the city and, and I think that you'll be pleased with the quality that they do if you drive around to their various developments. I mean, I have an office in one of their office buildings, it's a, it's a Class A, very nice office building, so, you know.
Are you going to get a discount in your rack? I'm sure you're for a test.
You know, I'm not.
All right, Mrs. Galloway and Mr. Bicata, thank you for your time. I would like to be respectful of the public that's here and move right into our public hearing portion of this. If we would then open up the floor for public hearing, we will first hear from proponents of this zoning and Mrs. Cannon, are we starting the clock to time?
We are.
Thank you.
I don't have any comment cards, I'm not sure if?
Do we have any comment cards that have been completed and submitted? Please pass those up front so that we will receive your comment cards and we will call you up for your comments.
Is there any others?
Mrs. Cannon, did we separate those by proponent and opponent? You want to call it in? Thank you. All right, we'll start with the proponent. Mrs. Cannon, if you'd call our first speaker.
This one's actually not marked, Mark Davis. Is this?
Are you a proponent or opponent?
That remains to be seen.
In between.
Well, we, we all need more information.
All right.
I can answer, I believe, some of the questions that especially Mr. Schmidt and Acting Chairman plenty have, especially with regard to the?
Talk to the mic.
I'm sorry.
First, also give us your name and your address as well.
Mark Davis, I live in Surrey, on Surrey Lane in Brookhaven, but I grew up in the, in the shadows of Century Center and still have property there, so I'm, if you will, a dual citizen. The private road that goes through Century Center has the bridge over Double Creek, which you were asking about. It is all private. A number of years ago, they went to the county to try to become public. The county did an audit and deemed that it was not to their standards, so that's why it's still private.
Do you know when that was?
It didn't.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
When, when was that?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Perhaps staff can look into that for you.
Mr. Chairman, just want to remind you the clock is going.
Okay.
Also, with regards to, to the map, it's not technically correct, you've got a whiteout section here that's also office buildings, but apparently not part of the proposal. Well, there's also apartment complexes that appear to be part of the green, that's not even indicated on the map. Also, you're in Pod one, you've got your one-story office buildings, where the blue goes to the north, the prop, their property stops just on the other side of their surface parking, so the surface parking is indicated on the map, they show that they own much more property than they do. They own maybe ten feet off their, off of their parking area, and the rest of that is single-family homes. So they are, there, there is not the buffer that it appears to be on the map. Also, I believe when we were creating some of the stuff for Brookhaven, one of the, one of the tenants of some of the included areas was access. Well, the apartment complex that's gables, Century Center used to, Highwoods used to own the, own the property, they sold it to the apartment developer, the developer? The developer built their buildings. They come and go off the Century Center property. There is only one access. It has to come through the Century Center property. So as far as it, if they're not part of the proposal, they're still an unincorporated cab. Now they're having to go through Brookhaven property. And I think that was something that was discussed that was, was sort of a no-go for the city. How are we doing on time?
There's seven and minutes and 19 seconds left, and there's several speakers.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think, obviously, it appears as though there are no proponents.
Okay.
So we're going to go forward with opposition.
Thank you.
We have seven minutes, 11 seconds remaining.
Can you stop the clock, please?
Well, we're trying.
Okay, yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we agree that we will extend the time to hear all speakers as long as their comments are concise.
We are doing the best we can, but your acknowledgement of any discussion is not appreciated. We are trying to accommodate you, and we want to thank him for making the motion. But let us get through the meeting and second the motion. When you have outbursts like that, you're eating into the time. And every time I have to stop and say that, you're eating into the time. So we do appreciate your attention here and your participation, but please let us conduct the meeting. We have a motion on the floor.
I apologize, Chairman, I could not hear the motion.
Okay, can you restate your motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we extend the time to make sure we can hear all the comments for people who filed a comment card with the condition that, and I'll leave this to the chairman to enforce, with the condition that everyone be concise.
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second that.
We have two seconds.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Yes.
If you don't mind, we probably need to identify what that time would be per person.
Sure.
I would recommend that it not exceed three minutes per person.
How many forms do we have?
We have six and one that would not like to speak, but would like to be noted in the record.
Okay. I am going to ask that we get a friendly amendment motion if the panel wishes to do so. And accept the friendly motion, three minutes per speaker. And I think our first speaker set the precedence, he spoke about three minutes.
A substitute motion?
First, we have a motion on the floor, it has been second. So we either get a friendly amendment or we vote that motion down, and then another motion would have to come. So, friendly amendment. You're going to, you want to do a friendly amendment?
Yeah, I, I, that we, let each speaker to three minutes. Mr. Chairman, a second.
Okay. That motion has been moved and seconded, that we allot more time for the citizens to speak. And it's been properly seconded. Any questions? All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 aye. Aye, aye, aye. Has it? We will now entertain all speakers that is in the possession of Mrs. Cannon.
The first opposition comment is from Martin Randall. He does not wish to speak, but his comment is, if a plan is premature and a plan is needed to rezone, then rezoning is premature. So that is the comment from Martin Randall. The next speaker will be Elmer Weis.
Good evening, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak on this. My name is Elmer Weis. I live in the Clermont Terrace neighborhood, which is just off of Clermont Road. My property backs up to North Peachtree Creek and is within the 250-foot distance to the Century Center property. I'm speaking on behalf of my neighborhood, myself, and the citizens for Chambly. We've gone through all this, we've looked at all this, and the first thing that we see is that this process has been incredibly rushed. The first official sign of this was July 1st, when the application from Highwoods was filed with the city, noticed was sent to DeKalb County. Saying that, however, from open records requests, we know that the city of Chambly, or, sorry, the city of Brookhaven has been working on this since at least March with the improvements from Highwoods. There was conversation with Mr. Bicetta and the city manager about that, going back to there, which also means that this discussion was going on while a bill was working its way through the state assembly that also involved this property. You've said it yourselves, the PC3 zoning calls for a detailed site plan. The, while we under, I'm not standing up here and saying I'm against the development. I think redeveloping areas can be a very good thing, I think it needs to be done correctly and carefully. You know, your own plans, the depth of the site plan, stormwater survey, traffic studies, that area has North Peachtree Creek and Peachtree Creek running through it. They flood all the time. I can tell you because my property gets flooded all the time. So do my neighbors. It's an area where there can be issues. If we're going to start adding more buildings, more surface area, taking out more trees, that's something that has to be looked at. To give effectively a blank check, granted there'll be conditions on there, but if the zoning is already in place, that is a much simpler step at this point than if you were to bring the property into the city under the zoning it's already using. And then at a later date, when the developer is ready to pursue this, he has his site plan prepared, he has his research done, and then he submits for the zoning change. Doing that and communicating clearly with the neighbors, I don't think that there would really be a problem with it, more than any other development project. The review process that's required has been, to put it mildly, hurry. Your own planning and development director doesn't know what the zoning is for each individual building in the property. Doesn't know what the plots are, doesn't know where they are. Understanding that the city of Brookhaven is new, this is, I'm guessing from the numbering sequence, this is the fifth zoning application that you've heard this year, which that also means for your city. This is a very, very large undertaking. A development like this, you know, I've seen it in other places, it can take several years to work through the tracks, to get the research done. Just the, the stormwater studies from the engineering side of things can take a year. This is advantageous for Highwoods. It saves them a lot of money upfront. If they can get the overall zoning in place, I just have to do reviews, I have 20 seconds, I understand. It's going to make it a lot easier on them. But again, this is something where it doesn't have to be done this way, and it's not following your own guidelines. I want you to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next comment.
The next speaker is Leslie Fryman.
Hi, thanks again for giving us all the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I wholeheartedly agree with everything that Elmer just said.
Please state your name and your address.
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm Leslie Fryman, and I, my address is 2070 Plantation Lane, Chambly, Georgia. And I'm speaking here tonight as a citizen of the city of Chambly and also a property owner in the proposed annexation into Chambly. So I follow local politics, I go to council meetings. I'm not a developer, I'm not a real estate agent, I'm not a planner. But I've been to enough meetings to know that processes like this and rezoning changes of this magnitude take a really long time to be done correctly and to have the correct amount of citizen input and stakeholder input. I've never in my life could expect a development of this size and of these changes that are being proposed in density to be announced July 1st and voted on July 22nd. I just don't think that's a very transparent, open way for a city to do business. It complicates it even more that this property is in an annexation that's about to be voted on in November. So it's really unclear as to whether this property would remain in the city of Chambly when they vote on the legislative amendment that is already in place and was signed by Governor Deal and the DeKalb delegation as a bipartisan bill and approved by the city of Chambly with the anticipated revenue from this property. I know that the annexation vote is not something that you all are here tonight to discuss. You're talking about the rezoning, but it's part of a much bigger picture, and I believe that's why this is being so rushed. I think under any normal circumstances, all of you are smart and educated and care about your city. You would never, I would hope not, ever approve something of this magnitude without your own, without the required site plans that your own city mandates. There's, there's big reasons for that, especially the traffic studies and the stormwater management. I just, I think as Elmer said, you're just kind of giving a blank check and making things difficult later down the road because it's already been rezoned and there's no going back on that. So I just really think that you have a responsibility to your own constituents to have a fair, open, a fair and an open process in all of this. And I don't think that your own constituents must, much less the other area, the other citizens and stakeholders have really had any opportunity to review this. And based on your own questions tonight, I think that your city hasn't even given you the chance to really fully understand the magnitude of this development. So I just hope that you take your time and do what you know in your heart, I believe, would be the right thing to do when faced with a rezoning change of this magnitude within such a short timeframe. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Blanche Collins.
I'm Blanche Collins. I live in Tanglewood Circle, and I have a very brief comment or question. If there are no plans for immediate redevelopment, then why is there the rush right now for annexation and for rezoning of property? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is Nora Richardson.
My name is Nora Richardson, and I live at 1937 McJinkin Drive, which is the first street beyond Century Center. I have a simple question. It's to the people from Highwoods. Why did you go to...
Are they here?
Why did you go to Brookhaven instead of going through DeKalb County to do this?
The property owner has two minutes for rebuttal. He can answer that at that time.
Sure. Next speaker.
William Ennis.
Hi, I'm William Ennis.
Can you, can you raise the microphone up a little? You're vertically challenged, so...
The last person was much shorter than you.
Thank you.
William Ennis, 2223 Medfield Trail. I am immediately adjacent to the Highwoods Development Century Center. My property abuts it, except for the creek. So there's a handful of obvious questions that arise. For example, the flood issue that never came up. Somebody else mentioned, you know, the floods in the neighborhood. Much of that neighborhood that I live in, Hillcrest, is now in a flood zone as a result, ultimately of all the development that's gone in here. It was not originally built in a flood zone, it is now because of the paving and everything that has gone on since the development began. Also, parking structures. We're talking about upzoning of tremendous order. I mean, I couldn't even follow all of the increases in square footage, but at least doubling, tripling, quadrupling the square footage that's currently there. So where are all these parking structures going to go? Are they going to wall in our neighborhood? I mean, obviously, these are the kind of things that we would want to have some say in. So why is my neighborhood excluded from the annexation? I mean, it's just overly suspicious that Highwoods, who has been trying to develop these areas and has even tried to purchase, buy out our neighborhood, is now going around us to Brookhaven to get annexed and exclude us so that they have a route for decision-making that doesn't involve us, which obviously should involve us because we're immediately adjacent to that property and directly affected by everything that goes on there. That said, you know, the plans they're talking about sound nice, but there's going to be a lot of collateral issues. Traffic, parking, you know, there's, there's going to be a lot of issues raised. So I guess the ultimate question is, how is it possible even that Brookhaven would be able to annex a property like this immediately adjacent to us without our input? And I guess I probably don't understand the technical, political aspects of that. But that's, that's kind of the bewilderment of everybody here. Like, how can this happen so fast and be so dramatically affecting to every one of us? And yet we have barely any input on what's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Bill, I think it's Lowe.
And I'm going to remind the audience, we were very courteous and extended the time. Please be courteous and not show any applause. We would like to accommodate everyone speaking. So we're working with you, we're citizens of Brookhaven also. But please, let's acknowledge that we're following the rules of the meeting. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bill Lowe. I live at 2593 Mural Drive in Chambly. It's unincorporated DeKalb, but I have a Chambly mailing address. I guess the first question is, has this planning commission already made a decision? Or is that to be handed off to the city council for their...
We are actually listening to your comments, so we're not answering.
On this document that's handed out here, it's got recommended conditions. It says the staff recommends that the rezoning of PC3 be approved, subject to the owner's agreement, to the following conditions. Now, the staff recommends these conditions, but I know for certain, I've read these conditions before on the annexation application from Highwoods as a condition of their annexation. So I'm just bringing that to the zoning board's attention.
Would you repeat your comment?
The recommended conditions, it says the staff recommends that this rezoning be approved, subject to the owner's agreement, to the following conditions. These conditions that are listed here, 1 through 4, also appear on the annexation application as a condition of annexation. So that is kind of misleading, this document. It's saying the staff of Brookhaven recommends this when it's really the owner's stipulation that this be approved as a condition of annexation. That is all. And I'm pro-business, pro-development. I worked for a property development company for 10 years. So I'm all for business, can make a comment.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker.
Richard Matthews.
I'm Richard Matthews. I live at 1628 Ridgewood Drive in Brookhaven. I'm a lifetime DeKalb resident. My family tree's in DeKalb County for over 220 years. I do not understand, from being a professional logistics management for 42 years, how you can consider a rezoning without any traffic presentation of numbers. You will have compound issues like on Peachtree Dunwoody, where you have a police officer blocking Clermont. It now takes 48 to 62 minutes to go from Peachtree Dunwoody to Glen Ridge Drive most afternoons without rain, without Friday traffic. Secondly, it's just like what was driven through by the city. This city was driven through by developers, and that's what's trying to happen here. Secondly, I don't understand how the rezoning has any issue to annexation. It's a piece of property. I think we have our cart in front of our horse.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The final comment card, the person does not wish to speak, but it's Cynthia Fey, F-E-Y. And the comment is, the Hillcrest neighborhood is adjacent to Century Center. The back of the Hillcrest neighborhood is in a flood plain due to Peachtree Creek. If currently the landscaped areas are built out, the potential for Peachtree Creek flooding will be greatly increased. And I have no other cards, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. At this time, as Mrs. Cannon have indicated, the applicant do have time to rebuttal any of the comments that have been made. And at this time, I will allow the applicant that opportunity at their will, if they would like to. But we will follow our meeting procedures. So I will allot that time, and if you can start the clock when they start speaking.
And they actually have two minutes, but the clock says three, so we'll...
Okay, so you're going to stop it at 1?
Right.
Wow, that is good. All right, applicant, if you would like to come back and speak to any of the issues that have been raised.
We have the clock fixed now.
Thanks.
I respect everyone's opinion in the room, and I differ, of course, in my view... I respect everyone's opinion in the room, and I differ, of course, in my view, views on some of these issues. I'm sorry I didn't take notes, but just trying to recollect some of the issues that came up. First gentleman pointed out that there are some inaccuracies on the master plan. Some of the shaded areas may be slightly off. It's not an exact science. They're within the application and throughout this whole process, there are very detailed legal descriptions which support this whole application. As far as floodplain goes, any new development will be subject to various state agencies' review for stormwater management, stormwater control. It's quite a rigorous, thorough process for any new development, regardless of zoning. And I am sensitive to the floodplain issues, but believe me, there's not a thing that we can do that will increase the flood problem there. It just will not be tolerated by the various state agencies that approve all sorts of developments, every development. There are, in fact, a lot, you know, there are, most of what we would propose to do in the future will not increase impervious surfaces. Impervious surfaces are asphalt and what have you. If you look at the site plan, I don't know with certainty, but I'm just saying there won't be major increases. And if there are any increases at all, they will be dealt with with additional stormwater management.
Sir, will you please allow him to speak and stop interrupting him? We're really allowing everyone an opportunity to speak, and you're sitting there, you're speaking while he's speaking. Please respect him. That's all we ask him.
I'm sorry, I can't really recall, you know, all of the objections, but I just want to emphasize that whatever we do, whatever we've done in the past, and you can Google us, look at Highwoods, look at our history, you'll find that we're very responsible developers. Everything we do is with great quality care, and we do involve the community.
What's the topic?
It's that.
Sorry, sorry.
That's fine.
Thank you.
I guess I'll say a few things with regards to what we have in front of us, and I'll allow my other board members to also give comments. This plan, I've heard erroneous boundary lines. I've heard several things that we're looking at. In the industry, and I think we serve on this panel because of our profession and because of what we do. So I want the citizens to be aware that this is not an engineering-scale drawing. This is an illustrative map so that the individuals that we're talking to will be able to see a depiction of the area. So please do not take this as an engineering drawing. As it relates to the flooding, you're right. We will require that there are hydrology studies done to determine what has to be in place before anything, before any groundbreaking. We're not expecting flooding in the city of Brookhaven. I wouldn't want flooding in my neighborhood. So you're exactly right. That comes when a specific site plan is submitted for the city to review. Traffic, near and dear to my heart. We have a lot of traffic. We are going to have traffic. I'm not going to say traffic is going to go away. I'll give you a prime example. Detroit said they didn't want traffic, and look what happened to Detroit. So we're going to have traffic. It's what you do with traffic. You have to manage it, and you have to put the right facilities in place: surface streets, intersections, roundabout, or whatever the case may be to manage your traffic. Traffic is not going to go away. I wish I would say, I want to live in the city where we tell traffic to go away, but it's not going to happen. I think we have to be cognizant of that. We're not going to craft a world, a perfect world. What we would like to do is to make sure that as this process moves forward in the site planning process, that we hear your input. That's important. It's important to us as citizens of the city of Brookhaven, and I know it's important to you because you're here, giving us input. So please know that these are things that have to be done. We're not short-fusing anything. We're not rushing. This is only a bubble diagram, as I referenced earlier. Specific engineering site plans will come in, studies will come in, reports will come in, the law. I read to you the second time why we're doing this. We're not rushing this. It simply states that if the city is going to annex, this body has to make a decision. And for us to do our job, we're making a decision, regardless of what happens next week. If it fails, the decision dies. If they move forward with the annexation, that is the decision that we made incorporates, and we're following the law of the land that I read to you earlier. So please don't think that we're rushing. This is just a part of our job. I would like you to be here instead of us, but we're doing what we're doing to protect the citizens of the city of Brookhaven. Were there any comments?
I have one question. A question for council. I think I know the answer, but it'd probably be beneficial to state it publicly. The rezoning is not a condition to annexation. Is that correct?
Rezoning is required as part of any annexation.
But there is zoning that exists for the land today.
Yes, but it goes away as soon as you annex it, because zoning's DeKalb County. So the annexation goes along with the rezoning of it. It is part of the annexation.
Is it part of the annexation because that's the way the annex application was drafted?
That's the way the state law requires.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, just a question. Oh, hey, I'm sorry. We want to speak into the mic so you can hear.
May we ask, in terms of, I took quite a few notes from every speaker that approached the podium, and even those that didn't. I have questions about some of these points. Who can I direct them to?
We can direct questions to staff and announce ourselves.
As it relates to, I have one question specifically about the stormwater.
And we make a correction also, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Maybe first to staff. Staff has heard from residents of Hillcrest community with concerns about runoff and stormwater, correct?
Yes.
You're aware of that. Has there been meaningful change to the impervious surface coverage of pods three and four or any part of this project? Has there been a lot of recent development here? Does staff's knowledge that would cause a change in the stormwater or runoff? Or maybe this is a question you could defer that to Mr. Bucatelli, if he's still here.
Maybe I should do that. I'm not aware of any recent development here. I'm aware of some recent resurfacing and parking lot issues that the development was dealing with as I actually drove through them, but I think they were doing a repair to the parking lot. But I'm not aware of any current or recent new development activity on the impervious surface.
I'll tell the commission where I'm going with this. Somebody made the comment that, you know, Hillcrest never used to flood. It floods today. That's an unsettling pattern of reality, not just affecting Hillcrest, but FEMA is all around the United States. FEMA, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, is, you know, busy going through floodplain maps and so forth. The storm intensity has changed. It's different than it was two decades ago. You know, tributary systems, all sorts of different runoff areas are responding differently to, in ways that they hadn't done previously. What I was curious about is, has something happened at the property specifically during Highwoods' tenure of ownership that has changed the runoff profile, that DeKalb lets slide by? And/or is it kind of a reflection of the fact that, you know, that 100-year flood or 500-year flood, it's happened, you know, at an uncomfortably different pace in some cases? So maybe Mr. Bucatelli?
I can speak to that. DeKalb County is going through their stormwater, wastewater update, their unday federal decree, and I would say that there's several areas, not just this area. There are several areas throughout DeKalb County that have experienced the same because of the flood changes, the line move. So they're going through that now, and it's a federal mandate that they go through that. So the county is in the initial phases of that project, which they're going throughout countywide and updating their stormwater and wastewater facilities because of the flooding that has been...
And pardon the pun, but it's sort of intended. How does that data flow to municipalities like Brookhaven?
Well, also, the city of Brookhaven has just made an application to join the National Flood Insurance Program. So we'll be receiving any new updated maps relative to the classifications which identify floodplain areas. We have made application to be part of that program.
And is it your representation to this body here that you will be as part of the, as the staff person in charge of vetting out these development proposals? That will be, that knowledge will be incorporated into your new standards and factors that you...
That is required. Yes, sir, that is required.
I have one more. I want to come back to my last question, just to make sure it's clear for council. So if the city council votes to approve the annexation, they have to approve the zoning change?
They have to rezone. They don't have to approve the PC3 as requested. They have to rezone it from a DeKalb County zoning to a city zoning. In most annexations, I'll say about 80, 85%, what is done for sake of, you know, expediting process even more is transfer of the same zoning category from DeKalb to the city. It is allowed, however, if the applicant requests to have a different zoning, that the council consider that zoning to rezone to from the county zoning. But whatever it is, the council has to rezone from a DeKalb County zoning category to a city of Brookhaven zoning category. Otherwise, we're in kind of a questionable area as to what the zoning is, since DeKalb County zoning no longer technically applies.
So right now, the city council's option, though, is to accept the PC3 zoning in order to annex?
No, the city council can accept that. The city council can choose to rezone it to O-I and O-D. The city council can choose to rezone it to whatever they want, but there's always, you know, it's a very long conversation, but I'll try to make it as brief as possible.
I'm just trying to understand how this is, if this, how tightly this is connected to annexation.
It's inextricable in many ways. It has to be done. It doesn't have to be done to PC3. That's up to the council whether that's, they will approve it as a PC3 rezoning. But it's inextricably linked to the rezoning process. No matter how it is annexed, through legislation, through local ordinance, it's...
This is 100% method.
Yeah, 100% method, 60% method legislative act. Once the annexation becomes effective, the council or whatever city does an annexation goes through a rezoning because otherwise you're in a gray area as to what the zoning applies, and no one wants that.
So what's the order of the vote? Will the city council...
Annexation first, rezoning next.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, chair.
I'm still a little bit unclear, Mr. Chairman, and I suppose I should address my question to staff. But the common thread that I hear through many of the comments from the citizens is that there's at least a perception of this being rushed. And that, you know, and of course, we're all sitting here, and thank you, citizens, for coming out. But, you know, we're sitting here in a special meeting in mid-month, and so my question, I suppose to the staff, and I'll direct it to you first and let you redirect, is, why are we doing this?
The city of Brookhaven received a petition for annexation from property owners. The annexation law requires that the city of Brookhaven has five days to serve the county with notice of intent to annex. So on July 1st, when we received the annexation petition, we notified the county, and the annexation law then specifies how you move forward in the process, and that has led us here today.
Okay. May I follow up?
Sure.
So I'm just trying to, but why would this not be done in the regular order of business? So why are we here on the 18th as opposed to our regular meeting? I mean, what is it about this that is special? And I'm not trying to challenge you. I'm just trying to understand, and I think maybe many of the citizens sitting behind you may be wondering the same thing. So just for clarification, what makes this special?
I'm not quite sure how to address that to fully answer your question to the point that you need, other than to tell you that we are responding to the matter at hand and moving forward in the public hearing process in an expeditious manner.
Do I follow?
Sure, go ahead.
You know, the members of the public, and the members of the commission, me included, I think we had, echo the same question of Mr. Hass. But just so I understand this process, it wasn't as if, or was it? The Highwoods woke up in late June and said, hey, we better file an annexation application? Or has this been deliberated and considered, and had they met with you previously throughout the earlier parts of the year? When an applicant files an application, are the members of the, you know, municipal governance, are y'all having conversations prior to the receipt of the application? Or does it just come into the inbox, and then everybody drops everything and does the zoning procedures after?
I actually came on board with the city of Brookhaven in March, and I can't recall exactly. I would say that I probably, for the first time, met with Highwoods in perhaps May or June. And there were some conversations with city management and Highwoods properties about petitioning to annex into the city relative to the 100% rule on all of the property owners.
And that's a normal procedure, correct?
That's a normal procedure.
That's the way, you know, if you're a property owner and you want to do something with it or different, or you want to annex into a neighboring jurisdiction, you don't just, you know, fill out a tax cover sheet and send it into the city, correct?
I mean, I suppose one could do that, but typically you would have a conversation with the property owners. And this, yes, and this particular petition was submitted under the 100% method with all of the property owners in the petition. Which means that all of the property owners in the subject area chose to submit and seek annexing into the city of Brookhaven. And in that regard, the staff was charged with looking at, well, what is the best fit for the zoning to apply to the property? So the staff recommended the PC3 district for this body, the planning commission, and for the council to consider whether or not to apply it to the property in looking at the built environment and the future use of the property.
So where it says, we're, the city of Brookhaven as petitioner, that's not to apply as imperialist, you know, land grabber, right? The owner of this property requested that they be brought into the city.
Correct.
We did not go to, as a city.
That is correct.
In recommending PC3, as staff did, it's not because we've waved our wand as a municipality and said, hey, there's a piece of land we want to grab.
That, that's correct.
Or we might use it to the natural folks.
We, yes, the property owners approached the city of Brookhaven.
Sure, thank you. Sure, thank you.
Let me just add, there are certain documents that have to be submitted as part of the annexation application. Most important documents are, A, a survey showing the property, legal description of the property, and signatures of 100% of the property owners if you're doing this by the 100% method. 60% of the property owners, if you're doing it by 60% method. So there were meetings with the city, but there usually are ahead of time if it's a property of this magnitude, simply for the reason that, yes, the application was submitted on July 1st. That's when the application was stamped as being complete. Because during that time, we, the discussion was to make sure that the documents that were being submitted had all the complete information. So title records and such things to make sure that it was 100% of the property owners, make sure the survey matched the legal description. All of that had to be... make sure the survey matched the legal description, all of that had to be proper and complete in order for the application to be stamped complete. So it was stamped complete on July first is when the staff determined after looking at all the documents submitted that yes, the applicant has submitted, that the documents state law requires to be submitted in order to be considered for a hundred percent annexation. So yes, a property owner can submit an annexation application without having a dense discussion of it and if just one property owner in one lot is asking to annex, that would happen. But we're talking many lots, a hundred acres of property, you know, it's only reasonable for the applicant to have contacted the city ahead of filing this application to make sure that they were filing the application properly. But as Ms. Cannon said, it's not the city that contacted the property owner and say, hey, we all, we'd like y'all to come to Brookhaven. The property owners contacted the city and says, we want to come into the City of Brookhaven, please help us make sure that, you know, we do everything appropriate.
And I'll follow on with that. So the PC three was then the recommended zoning that was discussed?
By the staff.
By the staff.
What the applicant submitted to us is their concept plan for what they want to do with property in the future. And the city staff looked at that and determined that the most appropriate zoning district to recommend the council to rezone it to is PC three.
Okay, which PC three takes in a mix of uses and it makes it pedestrian friendly and the applicant has agreed that they will follow the PC three requirements to make it a mixed-use pedestrian-friendly community?
Yes, yes.
So is it, Mr. Chairman, may I follow on? Is it accurate to rephrase that as, or characterize that decision process on the city staff's part as, okay, Mr. and Mrs. Landowner, you're asking to come into Brookhaven. The code requires a rezoning action to occur. Given your office institutional footprint right now, based on the comp plan and kind of the future vision, from a qualitative perspective, PC three is what the city recommends because it is more up-to-date, accurate as far as its fidelity to human-scale development and the way responsible and modern development practices are in an efficiency standpoint. That PC three recommendation came out of a desire to have, from a city perspective, responsible land use for this parcel were to be brought in.
Yes, sir, I agree with that.
With respect to Mr. Lowe's comment, I believe he listened shambly. Staff's recommendations are, I don't know if it's verbatim or not, but basically the same comments or conditions on the annexation application. What this is saying, the staff's recommendations are, be approved subject to the owner's agreement to these conditions. It's not saying that the staff, did the staff draft these recommendations? Or the staff is recommending the language that the owners already agreed to? I'm just bringing that up, just to point out that there was, I think, the subtext that Mr. Lowe's commented. Just to clarify that it's not the staff drafting this language necessarily, but it's recommending that, the language that the owner has agreed to with the city is the condition.
I guess, let me see if I could bring some clarity to that. I did hear the comment earlier where a citizen spoke and you're asking now about the condition. As I look at these conditions, they're in favor of the city because it's going to fall back to the community development director who's with the city for items two, three, and four. So I don't know if it's germane to say, I don't know if it's germane to say where it came from, but I think what I like about this is it rests with us, the City of Brookhaven, to have the final say on any and everything as it relates to future site plans that are coming to us. So if the developer, if the applicant suggested these comments, I think it's favorable to the city to have these comments in there, or should I say these recommended conditions? Because ultimately, we want them to follow PC three, if this is annexed. And two, we want to be certain that they're doing the hydrology studies, the traffic studies, and all the likes. So I'm not too certain if I'm concerned where it came from, I just like what they're saying.
Well, I think that was my point, that in other words, regardless of who's putting a collar on them, they're putting a collar as being put on them with respect, that's what the condition is. It's, it's, you know, approval subject to the following, you know.
Mr. Chairman, the actual four conditions were drafted by staff.
Okay.
And I actually do have the four conditions, I pulled them up on my phone, that were in the annexation application. If you'd like to know the difference, I can certainly read these out loud to you, but they are similar and some are different.
Okay.
It's up to you as whether you choose for these to be read.
But they're not the identical?
They're not identical, they're similar and there are a couple that are different.
Anyone interested in hearing that? No, okay, so that's great. I think, again, it goes back to resting the City of Brookhaven to make certain that all areas are addressed from staff position, to make certain that we are looking out for the interests of those items that we discussed earlier in all the areas that are included within PC. Any other comments? Yes, Commissioner Hendrick? Hunter, excuse me.
How many property owners are involved? How many property owners are there?
You have to give me a minute. Well, they're actually listed on the front of your package. It's Highwoods Building Limited Partnership, Highwoods Perseid Limited Partnership and Century Group, and River H. Crum and Emily Fisher Crum.
And I assume there is a unified ownership control agreement in place for the zoning part? So that it's under one person's control with respect to the zone?
The condition number two of the staff report is a requirement to address that aspect pertaining to ownership. That's the purpose of condition number two.
And I'm sorry, let me just, okay. So it's not in place, but it's expected for the condition that they get that in place?
Yes, sir.
What happens if Highwoods sells the property to a REIT from, say, New York or Singapore or someplace?
The conditions run with the land.
But who would be the designated, I mean, unified ownership and control would run with whoever the new entity was?
I think that you're asking a question that if that, if we cross that bridge, we have to deal with it. So I don't know the different intricacies of what you're referring to, but dealing with all of those aspects would have to be between the developer and the community development director.
I guess one of the things I just want to make people aware of is that I think Highwoods has a very good reputation and reputable do what they would say. How do properties like this are sold all the time to other REITS? And they may not have the same local interest or the same commitment to this type of development. So I think it's important that whatever we put in place, it's something we feel good about, no matter who the owner would be. My overall concern is I find this application really startlingly incomplete. There is no site plan to speak of that meets the requirements shown here. We have a very broad-based concept plan, which some of the property lines might not even be very accurate. We don't have an intent statement, or the property statement, which is also a key, the written statement. We don't have any delineation of really the mixes of residential and commercial and how they meet the requirements of the PC district. And so I guess I'm still very reluctant to grant such a large, even though I love the PC district, don't get me wrong, and I think it's an appropriate application for this property. I just feel like to see a complete application so we know how it goes together. And I think the PC district, more than most districts, is really one that is based on a site plan. In other words, it's not based on just a couple general ideas, and we'll fill in the details later. It's based on a site plan, it shows how all the connectivity works and how it exists. It's an ecology district, really, and we need to have that, I think. So that brings me down to kind of considering what our options are, and I'd like to just see if I understand it correctly. One option would be to recommend that it be brought in with the same zoning as in Decaf County, the OI, OD, with all the existing slots and so on, is that correct? We could make that recommendation?
The planning commission has that option.
Okay.
Planning commission can make whatever recommendation the planning commission wishes to make.
Okay. Another option is to say that we could bring it in as PC three with the four conditions listed.
That's correct.
And a third option would be that we could bring it in as PC three and perhaps add some conditions.
That's correct.
My other question would be, what would be considered a substantial deviation from this plan? Would a change in building footprint be a substantial deviation?
It depends.
Would a change in roadway pattern or the addition of cross streets or roads be a substantial deviation?
It depends.
Would a change in the proportion of, well, which isn't even defined, but the percentages of residential, commercial, and retail as defined in the ordinance, if those were not met, would that be a substantial deviation?
It depends.
What does it depend on?
It depends on the nature of the request. If they come in, if a certain area says the building can only be two stories tall and they come in with a proposal for an eight-story building, that's a substantial change of which the staff will not approve. If they come in with a request to build a building that's a hundred thousand square feet and they need to build it to be a hundred and one thousand square feet and they remove a thousand square feet from a different pod, then that's a different story. You have to look at the overall cumulative effect and the effect and whether or not there's effect on surrounding property owners as well. So we have to look at each particular situation on a case-by-case basis to determine the degree of the change.
So if we added a condition that said any change in building footprint or change in roadway pattern or change in the percentages required here, or substantial change in the square footage that's listed in the master plan, any change of that, then it would need to come back for planning commission and city council approval? Is that a legitimate condition?
You have the authority to recommend that condition. I do not believe that that's a legitimate condition, but you do have the authority to make that request as the planning commission.
So can I put that question to the attorney? Is that legitimate from a legal standpoint?
That's not as easy to answer as you might think. Conditions that are essentially added to zoning have to basically be a condition that alleviates a concern, a direct concern of that particular zone being requested. Whether a certain condition does that and doesn't deviate and ask for something that it really doesn't concern itself with the intent of the zoning district, it may be challenged as a condition that's not legitimate. I can't, without, you know, seeing the condition, you know, looking at it and looking at the zoning category, tell you legally whether, in my opinion, it is a legitimate or not a legitimate condition.
It seems to me, if I understand correctly, someone needs to decide whether it's a substantial deviation or not. If we don't specify what the criteria is, then it'll be left up to staff and, you know, that, whatever the criteria they decide. Another avenue would be to simply specify the criteria and then maintain some control of the process in the public environment with citizens. Is that correct? Is that the reasonable way to look at it?
Yeah, you can specify the criteria some more. I mean, the zoning ordinance itself anticipates that it will be interpreted by the community development director. You can't find, you can start putting in conditions until tomorrow morning and you still won't cover all bases.
I understand now.
I think, and I'll come to you, Commissioner Smith. I think what we are doing is discussing specific concerns that's not in front of this commission as of yet. We do not have a site plan to be able to attach conditions specifically to something that's not an issue on the table as of yet. When we look at changes, I understand we want to be aware of changes and I stated that earlier, but I think until we have a site plan, because if we give a blanket change and if the change by ten square feet, that's a change. Does that mean it needs to come back to this body? I think we're a little bit with the cart in front of the horse by trying to add conditions to a site plan that has yet been presented. And we do realize that the director is responsible for receiving a site plan that's in compliance with PC three and this lot that's in front of us. But I think if we go too deep with this, and hear me out, public, we are concerned that what is going to be on the site plan is not in front of us yet. And we are looking out for the interests of the community once we receive that site plan. But I think if we sit here and go through a discussion of specific conditions that we really cannot specify, I think we might be getting the cart before the horse. But that's my position. I'm very respectable to my other commissioners.
Let me just make a comment. I think the issue is that we don't have a site plan and this rezoning requires it. And that's why, I guess, my concern is, and so I'm looking for ways to grant what I think is an aspirational zoning and that makes sense for this property, but to address a very incomplete application and maintain some sort of public review. So I think what you're saying right is exactly what, we don't have a site plan. What we're being told is a site plan, which is this very general concept plan. If we accept that argument, then let's just say, okay, we accept that, but then when you make changes to it, substantial changes, and that would be a change of a building footprint, a change of roadway pattern, or a change in percentage of building type that does not meet the PC three requirements, then it needs to come back?
Commissioner Hendrick, I respect your opinion, I disagree with your opinion and I'll tell you why. Later this year, the City of Brookhaven is going to do a comprehensive plan. That comprehensive plan is going to come back to this body and it's going to give us the area of the city that's going to look at, well, she says it's going to be less than what this is, right? We have to approve that. We cannot say, you want a developer to show up with a site plan for every parcel within the City of Brookhaven. We have to approve a forty thousand feet in the air vision of what we want it to be. But we cannot say to future developers, we want you to bring a site plan before we approve a high-level vision of what an area is going to be. So that's why I disagree, because comp plan defines a bubble diagram that says, this is what we want generally in this area to follow in these guidelines. And then as a developer or an applicant shows up, then they come with a site plan and then based upon the designation there, the director is responsible for making certain that they follow dot the T's, dot the I's, dot the I's and cross their T's according to this forty thousand feet in the air look. But we're going to have to do this for the entire city because we've adopted the caps, but we want the City of Brookhaven's comp plan. We want to create our vision and the community will be involved with creating that vision for every aspect, every parcel within the city. So I'm disagreeing with you because of that, because I think we cannot get a site plan for every parcel when we create a vision for an area. But the director has to bring that to us with the details.
John, I agree with you on that, and that's a comprehensive plan view. This is a specific view of a specific property with a specific zoning. So that calls for a specific site plan, so that's just our disagreement. So, that's just our disagreement. If it weren't this zoning district and this, these regulations, then you're right, it would not be an requirement.
Yes, I'm sorry. You looked at me after that. Commissioner Smith, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we've gone back and forth about this in work session as well. You know, one hang up with the way this is kind of worded is the uncertainty as it relates to, in number one, of the recommended conditions by staff. The subject property shall be developed in substantial accordance with Century Center Office Park Master Plan and by description included with staff recommendation. So, substantial accordance, I'll defer to legal. How do you define it legally? What's substantial? Or you don't know?
As with everything with legal terms of art, such as the word substantial.
I'm adding them, but it's a rhetorical question.
It's not. I can't, you know.
Positive.
Yeah, I guess we can limit that to 60 seconds.
Okay. It's within the reasonable discretion of whoever has the discretion to determine that. In this case, the community development director. So, under law, that gives a reasonable discretion.
Say that last sentence again.
Under the law, that gives the community development director reasonable discretion.
Okay, so the community development director, under law, by law, is permitted within, the code of ordinances here, to interpret?
Yes.
Whether or not site plan is stipulated as a specific requirement, because the community development director and staff that works with the community development director can designate a illustration like that as the site plan for the purposes of the zoning. Is that correct under law? That she's within the ability to do that?
Well, yes and no. Yes, in this case, let's not forget in this case that, you know, we brought up high... up there, but you have to remember, this rezoning is being requested, not by an applicant, it's being requested by the City of Brookhaven. So, this is a government-initiated rezoning. It doesn't, you know, if an applicant is requesting PC three as a rezoning, and they file an rezoning application, the code directs us as to what they're required to submit. This is a government-initiated rezoning to a zoning category. It doesn't necessarily require us to submit a full site plan to a property we don't own, but we are allowed to rezone property on our own initiative. So, yes, if the applicant had submitted an application for a rezoning to a PC three category, there are requirements under the code as to what they have to submit as part of that rezoning application. But this is being done as part of a state-required rezoning, state law required rezoning as part of annexation. Okay? And we just, and staff recommended the zone the staff felt appropriate to the future development of this property as intended by the annexation.
Okay, so my fellow commissioners will probably have questions about that. Let's set that aside for a moment. As it relates to substantial accordance with Century Center Office Park Master Plan, I'm looking at section 27-649.3, General Standards and Procedures under PC District. Three sub-districts, PC one, two, and three. The rezoning to the development of PC one, two, and three sub-district shall be governed by sections 27-649.14, dot 15, and dot 16 respectively. Under phasing, paragraph C, I'm reading here about a third of the way down. Each stage and phase of the PC District land development must meet the requirements of the chapter, as the city governing authority has all the information detailed plans required by the section to approve all phases of development at the time the initial zoning ordinance amendment sought by the applicant. Major changes as defined in section 27-845 to the phases of the land development construction shall require an application for an amendment to the zoning ordinance, reviewed by the planning commission and approved by the city council. So, what this is saying, it's referring to some language that I don't have in front of me. I don't know if members of the commission have it in front of them or not, or staff has it readily available to comment on it, but I'll just read that again. Major changes, I'm going back to...
Could you repeat the code section? I'm sorry.
It's referring to 27-845, but I'm reading this in 27-649. So, major changes is defined in 27-845, and I'm reading this under General Standards and Procedures as set forth in section 27-649.3. But what I'm trying to link this to is, when we say substantial accordance in the condition of the staff, is that also relating to the definition of major changes to the phases of the land development, which should, which in fact would require application for an amendment to the zoning ordinance, reviewed by the planning commission, approved by the city council? So, in other words, if, we could be saying the same thing as what I'm trying to get to here, that you're imposing condition one with respect to your, as a condition of approval to PC three. And in that condition one, you're obligating yourself or obligating the owners of the land that if they have a major change to the phases of the development and construction, they're going to have to require, file amendment to the zoning ordinance and still come for, pardon, this body, and be subject to approval, city council.
I'm reading that section. Can you give me a second? Can you repeat your question?
No. No.
Will you repeat your question?
Or you two get 60 seconds. And if you ask the lawyer, it has to be a yes or no question.
Sorry for all the obtrusive questions, okay. But look, come to the City of Brookhaven.
Let me just do this, so you don't have to repeat your question.
I can make a sustained.
Because you went back and forth between the phasing aspects of 27-649.3, and then you jumped over to the modification and changes to conditional zonings under 27-845.
Right.
So, in that regard, as it relates to condition number one, the subject property shall be developed in substantial accordance. If something is found not to be in substantial accordance, and if something that they propose to do does not comply with the master plan, is not in substantial accordance, and does not meet the PC three requirements, their only option is to either do a minor or major amendment, which thrusts them into one process or the other, which would be a minor amendment that may require a posting and an admin approval, or it would be a major amendment that would bring them back before the planning commission and city council through a public hearing process.
Right, so, would it be fair to characterize that condition number one, as staff has put forth, would provide a measure of protection and control to the integrity of the future development here, that in a wild example, an unlikely example, where I was to want to create a 300-foot-tall replica of the Eiffel Tower on 85, that would have to go before the public and before this body and so on and so on?
Yes, sir.
Yes. May I ask, something I wanted to follow up with Commissioner Hunter, I tend to sympathize with. It seems like one of the reasons that we are having these questions and why this meeting's gone on for two hours is because that there's no specifics in the plan. Otherwise, we wouldn't be sitting here right now. And there is still the perception from those who haven't drifted off out of fatigue or boredom that, that it's been, there's some people here, and I might be one of them, Mr. Chairman, that think that this has been rushed through with few details. And I think it's a good idea at 40,000 feet or whatever elevation you want. I think in general it's a good idea, but I think it just lacks specifics. And I would like to make a motion that would address both of these issues in that we postpone this vote until our next meet. And so, we have an opportunity to look at this further, and staff, and the applicants, and the citizens who, thank you for coming and staying, have a chance to get this together. That's my motion.
There's been a motion, and I'm not here in a second. I would like to say, as we are in deliberation, and I'm listening for another motion, because that motion has failed without a second. The city is the applicant, and according to our council, the city is not required to submit a site plan at this level. It's the developer who develops is required to submit a site plan. So, as we are aware, city government has different rules, especially when they're dealing with itself.
Mr. Chairman, I would just...
Finish first.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. The government have different rules as it relates to itself than an applicant that's showing up for development. So, I think with that being stated, I feel that we have the adequate information to move forward with what we have in front of us. We could delay it, but if it comes back, you're not going to get an engineering site plan, because it's too early in the stage to develop an engineering site plan or something that's not even finalized. So, we will be stuck with a piece of parcel that has a current designation that will probably never move, because we can't make a decision. Because we are premature. We're premature to say we're not making a decision because we do not have a site plan. A site plan is not required, according to council, for the city. Now, when a developer shows up, yes, we want a site plan, and we want all these studies answered as well. And I think that's been clear, it's listed in condition number two, listed in condition number three, as well as four. And there's state law that they have to follow when it comes to the EPD, environmental protection, for flooding. So, I don't want us to confuse this to say it's rushed, when all we're doing as a body is discussing the zoning at this level that the city has submitted to us, not the applicant. Now, when the applicant shows up, yes, we want a site plan, and I think they're on board with that, along with all the other engineering assessments and study, and mitigations on how they're going to improve areas that are affected because of a development, but we're not there yet. And...
Mr. Chairman, the other point, and I'm so rushed to get my, my motion out, that I also meant to bring up, it's a concern of mine, and I want to bring it up with the body, that we might be sending, you know, by making this sort of decision process that we're going through in addition to the two other concerns, that we're not setting a precedent on how this board makes decisions. So, I just want to air that as a concern of mine to the chair.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Sure, we've had two work sessions. We've gotten this information in adequate time. It's been publicly posted according to the city requirement. If we're not doing what we should be doing as planning commissioners within that time, and staff has been very patient with us with answering all of our questions, we have in front of us something that we have to make a decision on. Putting it off would be bringing individuals back, and I'm just not about time that the citizens come out and we continuously postpone stuff. I think we have it in front of us. We need a motion, we voted up, voted down, we voted with the condition, but we, I feel we, we as citizens of DeKalb County in this position have to make a decision.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we end discussion and vote on the matter as presented.
Okay. We have a motion and a second that we, can you restate that motion for the record, please?
That I'd like to end discussion and vote on the matter.
Thank you. That has been, that's the motion, end discussion. All is in favor of ending discussion, signify by saying aye.
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 We would show the record that we have one opposed and ended discussion, five in favor of ending discussion. Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion.
Sure.
I make a motion that we approve the PC three district to be applied to this property with the additional condition that any change in roadway plan, any change in building footprint from, now, we're using the master plan as our base plan. So, any change from this submitted master plan of the roadway pattern, of building footprint, or any deviation in proportions of residential, commercial, and retail space, any deviation from what's required in the PC three ordinance, be considered a substantial change and require approval, again, for the planning commission and the city council. Sorry, I wish I was more concise. I could try again, but...
We have a motion, and we have a second.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, whilst we can articulate a condition, I don't know how we can second it.
Okay.
At least I don't have enough information to...
All right. You can clarify after, if the motion doesn't get a second, it dies, and there's no need to discuss it. So, first, we need to either get a second to move on with the motion, and you can ask for friendly amendments or clarification. But if there's no second, there's no need to discuss. Do we have a second? Counsel, can the chair second the motion?
Mr. Ballows, say no.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, and I would ask that staff please note the additional conditions that have been placed in motion and second. And at this time, if you need clarity on him to repeat the motion to make certain that you have the language, I would ask that you let us know.
We do need you to repeat it. We got the first half of what you stated, but not the second half of what you stated. What I have is that you made a motion that, for approval, subject to an additional condition, that if the roadway pattern changes, or if the footprint of a building changes, or if there's a deviation in the properties of residential, office, or commercial space from the PC three, I wasn't sure if you meant district or plan, and that's where it stopped.
From the PC three district requirements, there's a certain proportion of residential to retail, commercial, to office, as required in the mixed-use area and in the residential area, primarily the mixed-use area. So, I'm not sure to have that percentage right now, but I can't tell, because there is no plan. So, if there's a request that that, if a request comes in that does not conform to that proposed percentages, then we consider that a substantial change.
Did you get that, Mrs. Cannon?
I have it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor that's been properly seconded. Any other question or discussion?
Request?
I'm sorry?
Request?
A request?
Sure. Just to repeat that condition again, as she's written it down.
All right.
The motion on the floor is the recommendation of approval of the PC three district with condition number five added, that says that if there's a deviation in the roadway plan or the building footprint, or deviation of proportions of residential, office, or commercial space from the PC three district requirements, if it does not conform, then the proposal is considered to be a substantial change.
I have a question about the different documents. Can I ask, do you ask it to Mr. Hunter?
Yes, you can.
So, that I understand, Mr. Hunter?
I want you to speak up to the audience.
So that I understand, Mr. Hunter? Is the motion number five, motion for condition number five to say, is it your intent to say that any deviation, or any major deviation or substantial deviation to those items? Or in other words, any deviation could be if a specimen tree has grown to the point where a roadway needs to be moved around. Is that going to be, you know, slightly to a CalAe? Is that going to be, you know, slightly to a howl, the canopy boundary of the specimen tree, now that it's twenty years old from when the road was built? Is that going to be a, because it's a deviation to the road pattern?
That's certainly not the intent.
So, it would be a substantial, in other words, is there a degree of deviation that we should?
Again, and we're getting too specific when we have the plans as of yet, and I would like to go ahead if we can move with a vote on the motion, because I think, again, we're getting back in the trenches and we're not there yet. All those in favor of the motion that has been stated by Commissioner Hindred and recited by Mrs. Cannon and seconded by Commissioner Cannon?
Cameron.
Cameron. Cameron, Cameron. Please signify by deciding aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
All right. Let the record show that Commissioner Hess and Commissioner Finkor oppose, and we have one, two, three, four, and support. The motion passes. At this time, if there are no other business, yes, sir.
I do want to recognize, Mr. Chairman, that I appreciate the staff's work, that in all the meetings, that they've become well-prepared. And so, I just want to recognize the staff and the director. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Likewise, I would like to thank staff for your support. Also, the citizens, thank you for coming out. You make the process work. You make us do a better job, and we make sure that we're looking out for your interest. So, thank you for coming out also.
Thank you.
Thank you, citizens. Any other comments? If not, do I get a motion to adjourn? Another second. And we have a second and a third, and a fourth. We call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.